Welcome to the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five work session of the Mayor's City Council of Hagerstown. The meeting is now called to order. First up, we have a proclamation for Red Cross Month. I think we have someone here.
We have the chair and the vice chair.
Okay, we have special recognition for the American Red Cross Month, two thousand and twenty-five. During American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people of the city of Hagerstown and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. This generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who notably dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. Today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. The Red Cross assists families impacted by disasters such as a home fire or flood, installs free smoke alarms, making homes safer, educates students in preparedness education, collects blood at local blood drives, and provides services to our military members, veterans, and their families. Therefore, I, William McIntyre of the City of Hagerstown, and on behalf of the City Council hereby recognize the month of March in honor of those who leave with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for allowing me to present to you today. My name is Josh Mongold. I'm the board chair for the Greater Shenandoah Valley Chapter, and with me today is Al Martin, our vice chair. We service the Greater Shenandoah Valley, which encompasses Hagerstown and in Washington County, Maryland. It goes into Jefferson, Berkeley, Morgan, Hampshire, Hardy Counties of West Virginia, and on down the eighty-one corridor into Frederick Clark, Page, Warren, and Shenandoah Counties in Virginia and the city of Winchester. As you know, natural disasters have been increasing in frequency and intensity and are occurring in areas that typically haven't seen large disasters. In nineteen eighty, the American Red Cross responded to an average of three national disasters a year. Last year, we responded to twenty-seven, and we are on target to double that number this year. You've seen the devastation caused by storms, most recently impacting North Carolina, Kentucky, and West Virginia, communities just like your own. Every community needs to prepare for disaster, so when roads and bridges get washed away and power lines and communication tools are down, families have the knowledge and resources they need to stay well until help can arrive. One of the other unforeseen costs of a disaster and inclement weather is the loss of blood products. When blood drives have to close due to storms, we lose life-saving resources that cannot be replenished. I usually put in a little bit of a personal pitch into this because my first career was hospital lab tech, working in the blood bank in the hospital labs. And when we pulled our statistics for our health system, we found that fifty-eight percent of all of our blood used was for hematology-oncology patients. So that's your cancer patients, because chemo radiation destroys the bone marrow. They're unable to produce their own blood cells. So that was more than trauma surgeries, and that's one of, you know, my personal goals and one of my personal parts of the Red Cross that I contribute to is, you know, hosting large blood drives. So if you have any community partners here interested in helping us host blood drives, please let me know. I left some cards up here with the secretary before the meeting. Especially, we are focusing a lot on African-American and Latino populations because they are the most compatible blood donors to sickle cell patients. So we're really working to try to get into those communities and the impact for that. The American Red Cross helps to prepare communities before disaster occurs, whether big, like the North Carolina or Kentucky floods, or small, like a single-family fire. Last year, in Washington County, we collected three thousand three hundred and forty-three units of blood, assisted approximately sixty-eight families who experienced the disaster, installed ninety-four smoke alarms, provided nearly fifty-eight services to military veterans and their families, trained nearly one thousand nine hundred and fifteen people in life-saving skills, and nearly three hundred and twenty students in preparedness education. The American Red Cross could not fulfill its mission without the dedicated volunteers who give selflessly to their time and generosity of our donors, and yet, due to the chronic state of our disaster relief operations and consistent need for blood, we are always in need for blood drive sponsors, blood donors, volunteers, and financial donations. This eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-five, we ask that you declare March Red Cross Month, which you thankfully did, and we dedicate that to the volunteers who serve the community and donors who support our mission. We also request members of Washington County to join us in our mission to alleviate human suffering and to be a beacon of hope to those experiencing their darkest hour. For those interested in helping, you can go to redcross.org or call one eight hundred REDCROSS. Thank you all.
Yes, just that I can't believe I've been a Red Cross volunteer for almost fifty years, and we're pleased that the Red Cross continues to be providing needed services for well over a century. And with our new expanded chapter footprint in not just Hagerstown, we have our main headquarters here in Hagerstown, Blood Center and other headquarters in Winchester, Virginia, and we're now serving a twelve-county area. But at our board meeting last night, you know, it was amazing to hear that fires and assistance for single-family fires here in Washington County is probably our largest response with already thirty-five fire responses year-to-date on our fiscal year, which begins July first. So we thank you for the support of the community and encourage folks to remember Red Cross, volunteer, and support during this time of Red Cross month. Thank you.
All right, next up, we'll have our preliminary agenda review. I'm trying to get through as quick as I can. We'll have call to order next week. Next up will be invocation, of course, pledge to the flag. We'll have announcements, our meeting schedule. Tuesday, April first, two thousand and twenty-five is a work session at four P M. Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five is a work session at four P M. Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, work session at four P M. Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, record session at seven P M. And Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, no meeting this scheduled. We'll have two appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We'll have a proclamation for Women's History Month. Have agenda items, citizen comments. They shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on the agenda only and limited to three minutes. We'll have public hearings, the Dow P U D, planned unit development overlay, professional office mixed text amendment, and cannabis-related land management code text amendments. Our minutes from February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll go over consent agenda. First up, we'll have engineering, is the pavement preservation program, F Y twenty-six through F Y twenty-eight. Next would be police, two thousand and twenty-five Chevrolet Tahoe S S V from Hertrick Fleet Services, Milford, Delaware, at fifty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Two, twenty twenty-five Ford interceptors from Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, ninety-one thousand six hundred dollars. Unlimited third-party storage, Axon Enterprise Incorporated, Scottsdale, Arizona, twenty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Next would be Public Works, replacement of sliding boards, playground specialist, Thurmont, Maryland, at ten thousand one thirty-two forty cents. Replacement of sliding boards, Metro Recreation Incorporated, Jefferson, Maryland, twenty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Street sweeper repairs, Maryland Industrial Truck, Lenzica, Maryland, twenty-six thousand eight sixty-one ninety-eight. Potterfield Pool Chemicals, Amato Industries Incorporated, Silver Spring, Maryland, twenty-eight thousand dollars. Next would be utilities, the light, S C A D A system, hardware upgrade, Avista Real-Time Systems, Elk Ridge, Maryland, forty-five thousand dollars. Water, one-point-five-inch meters, Core and Main, Martinsburg, West Virginia, two hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars. Mygradable M X U's, L B Water, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. R C Wilson High Service Pumps, V F D's, Ram Industrial Services, Camp Hill, Pennsylvania, two hundred and thirty-five thousand forty-five dollars. Annual Energy Action Plans for Edgemont, Smithsburg, and R C Wilson, Hazen and Sawyer, Baltimore, Maryland, forty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Wastewater will have Heb Road Pump Station, thirty-three Construction Change, Garnet Companies Incorporated, Fairfax, Virginia, two hundred and eighty-two thousand forty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. Our unfinished business will be approval of an ordinance, two thousand and twenty-four L M C tax amendments. Approval of an ordinance amending Chapter two twenty-four of the city code tax sale properties. Approval of an ordinance amending Chapter sixty-four property maintenance standards for pools. Approval of an ordinance, quitclaim for five twenty-eight East Franklin Street. Our new business, introduction of an ordinance, Chapter one eighty-six, nuisance abandoned vehicles. Introduction of an ordinance, quitclaim of alley at Washington County Transit. Approval of resolution perpetual and permanent waterline easement, Bowman Spielman, L L C. Approval resolution perpetual and permanent waterline easement, Bowman Group, L L P. Improvement of resolutions, establishing parking facility rates and fees, special event rates applicable to Hub City Garage and University District Parking Decks only. Approval of a resolution, acceptance of easement from Habitat for Humanity. Approval of two thousand and twenty-five firework dates at Meredith's Park. Approval recommendation for A R C grant request. Approval of investment, Hagerstown Extension Request for Marketplace, L L C. Approval of the Contract for Submittable Holdings Incorporated for the Establishment of a Grant Management Portal for City Incentive Programs. And approval of wastewater deduct meter for forty-five West Oak Ridge Drive. We'll have general citizen comments. Everybody's welcome to comment, and it shall be limited to three minutes. Then we'll have city administrator comments, mayor and council comments. Okay, next up is city transportation priorities for Maryland Department of Transportation. Mr. Jim Bender.
Good afternoon. The state of Maryland, its Department of Transportation has a consolidated transportation plan, or C T P, that they put together. It's a six-year plan. They update it every year, and it's basically sort of a blueprint or a list of priorities or an agenda projects that the state wants to complete transportation projects. And every spring, they reach out to us, to cities and counties in Maryland, and ask us for local priorities. What are the things that locally we are interested in? They take all of these priority letters from all the different municipalities. They try to put them together into one sort of cohesive thing. And then, in the fall, usually in October every year, Secretary of Transportation actually comes to each. He visits each county. He comes here to Hagerstown, reviews the local priorities, and talks about how they've tried to integrate those into the plan. So I can say that probably over the last seven, eight years, the priorities that the city has listed really haven't changed that much. And I'm just going to run through them very briefly. And then, if there are other priorities that aren't mentioned in here, or if you want to eliminate some of these or swap them around, we can certainly do that. I think both for the city and the county, the top priority is Interstate eighty-one, trying to continue the widening. We're pleased that the funding that had been pulled for Phase Two of the project was restored by the governor. So that, for now, at least, is moving forward. Phase Two would take, would do the widening from where it ended at Williamsport up to Halfway Boulevard and including the bridge. The bridge there at the interchange at Halfway Boulevard, which is a kind of a dangerous situation. Highway user revenue. Highway user revenue is the main source of funding that the city uses to do our pavement preservation program, which I'll talk about later. So it's very important to us to advocate that that funding be maintained. It's always, it's always a topic during the general assembly session, whether or not it's going to be cuts or rarely increased, I would say. We're hopeful that it will at least stay flat for the next few years, but I guess that remains to be seen. In two thousand and twenty, we had a study done for other pedestrian improvements that could be made in the downtown area. And because of the pandemic, a lot of those things that were in that study were not implemented. But I have just heard within the past two months that at least one of those projects is going to move forward now, and that's adding pedestrian lights at, I think, five different intersections in the downtown area. So that's, that's moving ahead. Park circle railroad crossings, that we continue to try to resolve, resolve that whole issue with the railroad. Difficult at times to work with, to work with C S X and to get their attention. We're also working with the state on trying to free up some money so that we can at least improve the Walnut Street Crossing, which is in very poor condition. We also support Washington County's, their priorities. One of them is the Eastern Boulevard corridor. They've got, you know, a multi-phase project where they would widen their section of Eastern Boulevard, starting at Jefferson Boulevard and heading north up towards Security Road, then eventually up to the Y M C A, and then the final piece would be connecting up to Marsh Pike behind the Y M C A. We think it's a good project, that whole corridor is important to the city as well as the county. So past councils have supported that. Dual highway pedestrian issues. If you've been out dual highway lately, you've seen a lot of construction. They are working hard on trying to get the sidewalk system completes the whole way out from Eastern Boulevard, the whole way out to All-Star Courts. I think it's going to be completed later this summer, if not before. And then, we also take advantage of certain other programs the state has. The Safe Rest School Program gets us funding to build sidewalks near schools. Bike Ways Grants, we have used those at different times to try to implement our Bicycle Master Plan. So we want to continue to encourage that they keep those programs. Transportation Alternative Plan can be used for trails. It can be used for other transportation-related things that aren't necessarily roadways. So we'll continue to advocate for those programs as well. Those, like I said, those priorities probably have not changed in a few years here at the city. And I've also attached last year's priority list from Washington County, and it's really the same situation with them. I think that their main priorities haven't changed. It's mainly Interstate eighty-one. And they will be issuing their priority letter in April. So I wasn't able to put the latest version of that in here, but I don't think it's going to change much from the letter that they did last year. So I'd say if you have any questions, or if there anything in these priorities that you want to remove, or if you have a priority that you'd like to add, please let me know.
Yeah, I would like to add the Mark Train on there because Senator Portman did a study. We're expanding the Brunswick Line. That's an important thing for this area. I did ask Delegate Schindler and Senator Portman's office where we're at with that, so maybe you can contact them and see. I mean, we'd had the town halls, which I did come to, it was about two years ago here at the library, so in support of that. You know, so I would definitely like to put that on the agenda for the Mark Train. And then, I am glad that the governor decided to include the funds for eighty-one because it's a very dangerous interstate with all the eighteen-wheelers and so many accidents, and it's only twelve miles. You know, and it seems this should have been widened thirty years ago, you know? But I'm glad that that's going to be done, so.
Can I add one thing? You got railroad crossing in South Potomac.
Because that's not included in what you already have in here. That's just Park Circle.
It's mainly Park Circle, but I did reach out.
Not the same line, is it?
It is the same one.
Is it?
Yeah, it cuts from Park Circle around. It goes down, crosses Garland or, and then Potomac. I did talk to our state highway representative who deals with railroad issues and made her aware that that crossing is also in poor condition. And she has monthly meetings with C S X in Norfolk Southern, and she was going to bring that up to them as well. But I'll add that in here. Thanks, Jim. Well, what I'll do is draft a letter, and I don't know if it needs to come back to this body before we send it, or I think it's pretty straightforward what you want, what the priorities are.
We'll send you a copy. Just send a copy out. Yep.
Any other question for Jim on that? All right, you might as well stay here, Jim. Yeah, the pavement preservation program, F Y twenty-six, twenty-eight.
Right, so pavement preservation. The city's program has a couple of different facets. Basically, what it boils down to is every year, when you see the streets being, the pavement being milled and overlaid, that's really part of the pavement preservation program. And the reason that we do these lists is really for planning purposes, not so much for the engineering department, but it's more for the various utility companies that are out there because we want them to know what streets we're going to be paving in the future so that they can get out and do main replacements, service replacements before we get there because we don't want them cutting our newly paved street, you know, in the future. So if we can get, give them notice and get them in there before we're ready to go, that's a good thing. So that's why we generate these lists. Our program is mainly milling and overlying streets, but we do do a couple of other treatments depending on the situation. One is called slurry seal, which is kind of like driveway sealing that you would do on your driveway. It's a little bit more than that, but that we can sometimes do just to extend the life of a street a little bit so we don't have to fully repave it. We also do crack filling on some streets for the same reason. We're trying to help those streets limp through until we can get them on a schedule to be fully. Like I said before, highway user revenue is really how this program is funded. And what we do is we get a contract. We're under contract now. We have a contract with one of the local paving companies, and we've got this list of streets, and we work our way down through it, and we are looking at how much money is being spent on, as we go through here. You know, it's street by street, how much money we have left. And if it gets to the point where we don't have enough funding, then those streets that are still in the list just get flipped to the next year. So you can see that we, it says draft, but this really will be the final, the final list for the spring of twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-six, and then for fiscal year twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Those are draft lists. We're still considering different streets we're going to do and looking for, looking what makes sense. Later this spring, we're also going to be doing a pavement condition survey where these specially-equipped vehicles will drive all over the city with sensors and cameras, and they will actually tell us, you know, in a quantifiable way, how rough is the street? How bad is the pavement? How cracked it is? And that helps us make decisions for coming years on what street should be on the paving list in what order. So if you have any questions, I can certainly go through that.
Any question, Jim, on that one? All right. Next up is quitclaim requests, Washington County Transit Alley, I thirty-five.
So back in October, we had presented a request from Washington County, basically the Washington County Transit, to quitclaim part of an alley out at their facility out on West Washington Street, Washington Street and Devonshire Road is where their administrative offices and some of their maintenance facilities are. And the reason that they were asking for this quitclaim is they are doing some long-range planning, and they would like to stay at that site for the next forty years. But that alley cuts through the middle of two different pieces of property that they have. And it would be difficult if the alley was still there for them to do the type of expansion of their building that they would want to. So what they ask is, would the city be willing to quitclaim or give up our rights to a portion of that alley so they could do their future expansion plans? And at the meeting in October, the council considered that, but the council also considered a letter that they had, that we had received from the Jehovah's Witnesses, the Orchard Hills Congregation, which is right beside the Washington County Transit site. They were opposed to the quitclaim because they felt that they're a growing congregation. They have a lot of traffic, a lot of different services, and they just felt that losing that access from, from the east, from Devonshire Road into their property was going to cause problems. And so the council that night said two things to me, basically. One is somehow they need to come up with a plan that makes Jehovah's Witnesses whole or that takes care of their interests. And the second thing was that there are two other properties there that adjoin that alley. And the council wanted some assurance that both of those property owners were okay with the quitclaim. So over the next couple of months, the Jehovah's Witnesses congregation was talking with Washington County, and they were also talking to their own design engineer and trying to come up with a layout of their property that would address these concerns. And there's actually a picture of their layout in the packet. And where they finally landed is actually creating two new driveway entrances off of Nottingham Road and basically creating a loop through their parking lot around the church that would, they felt would give them sufficient access to get in and out without, if the alley was quitclaimed. Because this was the change in what they had presented earlier, they had to get back to the Board of Zoning Appeals to have this reviewed to see if there were any concerns from the board. The board didn't really raise any concerns. So I think that where they are, where they are now is that Jehovah's Witnesses are moving forward with finalizing their plan and probably will be submitting it to the city as a formal site plan here shortly. Also included in here, the county was able to, in writing, get indications from those other two property owners that they had no objection to the quitclaim. So at this point, I think that staff's recommendation would be to, to the council, to go ahead with the quitclaim, and if that's acceptable, then we would look to introduce an ordinance next week to start that process.
Yeah, I'm glad there was feedback obtained from the adjacent properties and Jehovah Witness. Because I remember that discussion, that was huge concerns for us at the time. So I'm glad there was a resolution.
Yeah, it's, I think originally it started out, they went through the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals because they had parking basically in their front yard on Nottingham Road, and that's something that is normally discouraged. But the second time was for this new driveway configuration that they came up with.
There was no plan to quitclaim or lose the portion of alley that the impacted property owners were or are access to and from now. So would the property owner, maybe the simplest way is, does this really have anything to do with us? What they want to do on their property? Could they do this independent of this at their leisure if they wanted to come to the city and seek approval for this separate thing? Yes, they could. Okay. So like, so there. So like, so they're 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 on the track to do that. That's of their own accord. They're paying for that themselves. Really has nothing to do with us, right?
Nothing to do with the city.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know what conversations they may have had with Washington County, you know, because I'm not sure on that end.
I mean, the only thing that I see is a street that has a lot of cars parked on it, and you're going to lose at least three or four parking spaces with this configuration. So I guess that that for me, and I don't know, you know, obviously the the parking lot is fairly full of cars on this particular snapshot. But clearly you see that there, one, two, there's four cars parked on the street and that that's not going to be available to, and you're certainly not going to be able to squeeze a spot between these two, the existing alley and and the new proposed entrance to the property. So I have that concern. And then the second is always for me, if we provide this parking along, it really isn't a matter of Nottingham, but rather the sidewalk, to make sure that it sits back so cars don't pull out into the pedestrian walkway. And then whether or not this slanted style parking, I assume there will still be some type of barrier so that because if, in other words, a slanted style of parking, you're going to have cars pulling in at an angle with that front right or the passenger side portion of the vehicle with the potential for it to hang over into the alley. I just want to create a situation where, you know what I mean, now the other two property owners on the other side of the alley are impacted by their access in and out.
Well, I'd say a couple of things. I think you're you're right to bring up the issue of losing parking spaces on Nottingham. I mean, just like a lot of the residential streets in the city, parking is at high demand. I think that, you know, in the future, if the if the quit claim is approved, then I think we can look at least adding back one space where the where the alley actually entrances now, if it's not going to be used by those other properties. I think you have a good point about the vehicles and sidewalks and alleys and and trying to keep them from overhanging. I think that as part of the site plan, that's something we're going to be looking at, whether or not they're putting in curves or are they putting in wheel stops or something to prevent that from from happening.
Yeah, I mean, I look at the exit over on the one side, and while the yellow line technically keeps, you know, the ingress and egress of these improvements on that property owner, you are taking away parking spaces in front of the adjoining property because it isn't as if you're going to be able to to park right up to that that exit portion. You're going to have to sit back, you know, twenty or thirty feet.
Right.
So you're taking away, and I can't see, you know, north of this picture, so I don't know whether that property has on or off street parking, but you are taking parking away from in front of that house.
We are, and the Jehovah's Witnesses actually went to that property owner because there was a concern raised by the planning department that, okay, now you're going to create this this new driveway, basically in their side yard or very close to it. Yeah, so I think that what what is shown on there in red is the church is willing to put up some sort of a privacy fence or some sort of a screen on that side, and that adjoining property owner saw this plan and they were okay with it. So.
Let's go with them.
Any other questions for Jim on that?
We will put a introduction of the ordinance on the agenda.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Are you guys still here?
After that, we'll let you go. Habitat for Humanity Pedestrian Easement.
The former council member Marty Brubaker is here, and he's on the Board of Habitat for Humanity, and he came just to support or or answer questions if the council had had any questions. But this is a little bit of a strange situation. When the McCleary Hill development was built by the Hagerstown Housing Authority, it was a combination of some townhouse, multifamily housing, but there were also a series of single family lots that were created along West Washington Street or Maryland one forty four. And those lots, at least some of them have since been sold to Habitat for Humanity, and then they are looking at developing those lots. In the original development plan, there was supposed to be a sidewalk constructed along the edge of West Washington Street. That sidewalk wasn't built, and I think the the reason for it, what they didn't, the engineer didn't realize at the time or they didn't think of it, is that between the where that sidewalk was supposed to be in these house lots, there's about a four or five foot deep ditch that any of those sidewalks, I call them lead walks, that would go from the house out to that public sidewalk, would have to cross over that ditch. So you'd have to put a big pipe in there. You'd have to fill fill up so that you could build that that lead walk out there. So in talking with Habitat and talking with the Housing Authority, staff, planning, many planning and engineering decided that one potential solution is instead of building a public sidewalk out along the edge of the road, put it on the, I call it the house side of that ditch so that it's almost, it basically is running part of these yards for each of those single family lots. The issue that that creates is when the sidewalk was out along the road, it was in the public right of way. If you move it back onto these lots, it's not in the public right of way. You're on private property that's crossing those those different lots. So what we proposed is, okay, let's go with that configuration, but they're going to have to provide a pedestrian easement or right of way so that the public can is able to use that public sidewalk even though it's technically on private property. So really, that's what that's what the purpose of this request is. Habitat for Humanity is willing to grant an easement to the city so that this public sidewalk can be constructed there. It's the purpose of this is just to get the council's agreement to accept that easement from Habitat.
Any questions for Jim on that one?
I do.
So, and I'm looking at it here on street view to get a better understanding because it looks it looks fairly silly. When you look across the street and you see that the area that's already constructed, it's it's along the roadway. I mean, I understand what you're 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 doing here, but it looks like we're pushing the sidewalk really close to those houses. I mean, it just, and so then my question is, what part of that state right of way will then be maintained by the state? And how much of that area is, will it be the expectation that the property owner is going to have to mow and maintain of that swale now?
I mean, I think that most of that swale, you can you can kind of see, there's a broken lawn with two dashes that runs.
Okay, I see that.
I think that's the right of way line.
So almost two thirds of that will still have to be mowed by the property owner, like almost to the bench of the upside toward the road.
Right. Unless there there had been some discussions, and this might be sometimes that Marty can speak to, I know that there were discussions between the Housing Authority and Habitat about, I think, about this issue and whether or not the Housing Authority was going to be willing to do maintenance.
The Housing Authority is, we are, Habitat is providing the design, going through the approval process. And Sean has, Sean Griffith, the Housing Authority, has stated that they will provide maintenance along the general area of the sidewalk. So we are leaning between the state and the Housing Authority. The area from sidewalk to the to the road will be taken care of in that manner, the same way with the with plowing from the Housing Authority. So we don't have a signed contract to that effect, so.
I mean, so somebody's going to have to confirm for me that somebody's going to maintain that area on the street side of the sidewalk if you're going to push the sidewalk back that far.
I'll get a definite response for you.
I mean, I just don't want it to end up looking like an uncapped area then because it's supposed to look like, you know, it's fronting the street. The second is, when you look at the street view, it appears that a segment of that sidewalk at the bend coming out is already built. I'm assuming we're going to take that out.
It's it's actually cracked. It would need to be removed and replaced anyway, even if we were putting the sidewalk out at the out at the road, but it needs to come in.
So then, does that mean you'll? So I'm just trying to figure out, so all of that's already built. You come across the crosswalk, and then what? Then you're going to turn right and then go down and then to that other piece, this this new piece?
I mean, it's you're you're right. It is a non-standard configuration for sure.
What happens at the end here? Yeah, that there's nothing there currently?
No, it it goes up, the sidewalk could go up and hit the shoulder of West Washington Street, and it's just going to end there. And there's been some, there's been some talk at the State Highway District Six office about, you know, moving it further up on their priority list to look at putting sidewalks along Maryland one forty four.
So as this swale then, because even on the road view, it looks fairly shallow and wide. So I guess I'm asking what happens on this end because I'm just trying to figure out what happens to the flow at that end? Like, will that be built up over top because it looked like it sort of ends here on this property?
There's actually, there at Granite Drive, also the left end, there actually is a drainage inlet up there that that water that the water can get into and be carried away. At the other end, this this ditch, as you head east back toward town, it's getting shallower and shallower.
Right.
So by the time you get up here, close to that end, really, you don't.
Yeah, I see the grid line. When you get to this panhandle lot, it disappears. I'm just asking what happens to that flow at the end of that panhandle lot? Does it go somewhere?
It, well, it will. Would have to go back and look at the look at the grading plan for the developments. But I think it, from what I remember, it flows back to the cul-de-sac and then gets into the drainage system.
How come it didn't continue? Like, from the other side, there's already a sidewalk there. How come you don't just continue across?
Sure. Good question. I think that the, and Marty might be able to speak to this too, the Housing Authority, I think they were concentrating on their part of McCleary Hill, and I don't know if it just sort of slipped through the cracks that this didn't, that sidewalk didn't get built when they were still really involved out there.
Well, this, the Housing Authority was responsible for the construction of the whole subdivision, including the Habitat lots. And they are paying for the construction of the sidewalk that was submitted. But I don't know why it was left out. I don't have a good answer for that. To me, between the Housing Authority, Habitat, and indeed the city, there was a bit of this.
Yeah.
So, you know, to be to be very frank, and we we got building permits issued, and we have three houses. We have two finished and one under construction in that section now. But in order to get, and without the sidewalk issue being resolved, but in order to get a permanent use and occupancy permit, and indeed, I I spent thirteen years on the planning commission, I know how important sidewalks are, and we need to get this done. So again, that was the the best solution. Frederick Seiber was the engineer on this. He he's doing that as as helping Habitat, and, you know, this was what they thought was the best solution, given the circumstances. And it is a little close to the house, but the main focus of the houses, frankly, the development is to the to the south, going the other direction, to the backyard, so to speak. So we think that it's can be tolerated. In some ways, the sidewalk's safer there than right bent against Route one forty four there on top.
The only thing that I'm thinking is, especially being out that far, a lot of the residents will not have vehicles. And if I'm still correct, there isn't public transportation that's running out there, right?
Not to the developments.
So it needs to be a very good walkway because a lot of them will probably be walking in closer to town if that is their, how they're getting around. You know what I mean?
It'll be a standard with sidewalk. It'll serve the function, you know, carrying pedestrians. To me, the issue is what it does to the property owners along there. Now, they'll be parking their cars and back on the, it's actually a private drive. It's not a public street, I think, behind there.
That's right.
Yeah.
I've been out there. It's a beautiful development. I'm just thinking of any walkers.
Yeah, but I I think this will serve, probably serve pedestrians better than the plan where it would have been up along the road. And if there's public transportation arrangements, it would just be a matter of having stops within the development, it seems to me, not.
Not up on one forty four. That's what you're speaking of.
No, I just know that there is no transportation going out there, period. So anybody that doesn't have their own vehicle, they may be walking.
Right.
I mean, there there is public transportation that does provide service out to the hopeful road area, to some of the businesses out there, but I don't believe that County or Washington County Transit has a dedicated route.
So just sorry, so the secondary sidewalk will move over?
Yes. Where the green or the gray, the orange was where it was originally designed to be.
Mayor, if we can get a response to the question, we can leave it on next week's agenda's current report. Sorry, on for approval on the regular session.
Is that okay, Kristen?
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is vacancy determination, all folk.
Following the Jim Bender Show here is going to be hard. All right, so, you know, we were, my office was asked, you know, how do we determine that properties are vacant? So how do we, you know, come to that determination? So first, why do we actually have to determine typical property is vacant? Well, the city has a vacant licensing program where we license residential and non-residential structures. Currently, we have three hundred and thirteen vacant properties in that program, and that includes our downtown storefronts. There are also part of the non-residential properties. Of those, for if you're curious, there's nineteen vacant storefronts in the CCMU zoning district right now, but there are twelve entire structures that are vacant in that area as well. So that's where sometimes it could be misleading that I'm saying only nineteen, but there's actually several structures that are vacant in that zone. The city also, we created several exemptions that can exist for someone to not be in the program. This was done back in twenty sixteen. So I'm sorry, first, let's say that first you have to qualify, you have to be vacant for six months, be in an active foreclosure, or was condemned for thirty days. And that's the entire structure condemned. So if a unit was condemned inside of a multi-unit building, that would not trigger them to be registered in the program. It is, his entire structure has to be vacant. And then there are some exemptions as to why people don't have to register. One is that in the first year of the vacancy, that if it's listed for sale by a licensed real estate agent here in the state of Maryland, if they have active permits to bring it up to habitable condition, that usually means that we defined that in twenty sixteen, basically meaning that you have two or more permits that you're actually looking to do renovations. Did the first year vacancy after the certificate of occupancy was issued, which I cannot recall any time that we've had any one qualify. That the first year of vacancy after the certificate of occupancy was issued, which I cannot recall any time that we've had anyone qualify for that level. And then also, if that's for new construction and then six months following um an existing structure as well, I can't recall one of those that fell into that category. Generally, it's the ones that are listed for sale or that have some sort of active permits. Now, uh, we do identify properties as vacant and we have to generally monitor them because they've come up as vacant to us. Right now, we have ninety-three properties that we have to monitor that have meet some sort of qualification that don't be registered, won't be registered in the program, or we've been uh received some sort of reason to why the property appears vacant. Uh, you know, some of those, we 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 keep an eye on that that makes sense. I mean, that, you know, it's because of their profession. They might be a truck driver or a traveling nurse. I understand that that could be a reason why they're showing some sort of vacancy. Also, um, you know, they they are snowbirds, you know, that they go down south, you know, during the cold months and come back up when it's warmer here. It's understandable. Uh, some I'd say they're vacation home, it's here in Hagerstown, which is nice to know we're a vacation destination for people. Uh, but it is one of the reasons that we receive. Uh, also, we have where, you know, you you might have, um, you know, you're staying with someone significant other that might not be at this property frequently. So you are staying in someone else's place and you have this resident, uh, which which is understandable, which we, you know, we try to understand those and we listen to those side ones and we continue to monitor them, but we don't, you know, seek uh registration at that time, we just watch. Uh, some of the ones that we kind of uh receive, the why they shouldn't be in the program is a little bit uh more unique, such as um, I shower at the Y and I only drink bottled water. Uh, that's why the day are showing vacancy uh at the property. Uh, they're caring for a sick friend. They babysit grandkids and they only sleep at the house. Uh, that's why they're not there during the days. Uh, or we've received that that's their man cave, uh, where they go to just get away. Uh, so those are the ones that we we receive. So sometimes you might see other properties are vacant, it might not be on the list, and there's a reason why, it's which we continue to monitor them just to, you know, see, you know, do they need to be in the program? So how do we determine if a property is actually vacant? Uh, we we monitor a lot of the business records that the city keeps here. So we will review a lot of those records and seeing if there is some sort of indicator that is making them appear vacant or determined to be vacant. Uh, we also receive a lot of reports from residents. Uh, that they're usually calling us saying, hey, the neighboring property is vacant, can you all come out and take a look at it? Uh, what we'll do is we'll visit any property that is potentially vacant to determine, you know, is it actually vacant? You know, we'll knock on the door, see if anyone's home, see if any type of things, you know, is uh, you know, there are indicators that we can see, you know, if it's if it's a little bit dirty, if it's not maintained, those types of items, you can just see those things that are coming out. If they um, if they do qualify for the program, we will send them an application and ask them to register for it. Uh, we also receive reports uh from other departments here in the city of Hagerstown. This is not just something that's solely driven by our office. Uh, we all communicate uh very frequently within departments. Customer service or support services is one of the ones that tells us the most that a property is vacant. Obviously, there there people are out going to do on reads at properties and then we let us know, hey, this property is vacant, you all need to take a look at it. They're they're very good at reporting that to our office. Also, uh, the Fire Marshal's Office will definitely report vacant properties if they receive some sort of call that they need to respond to, as well as our police depart- excuse me, as long as, as well as our police department, they will also uh do for once for calls for service. Uh, and then, you know, again, we'll, you know, investigate that, determine if the property is vacant and send them the application. So with the vacancy determinations, you know, when the program was established, it is doing exactly what we wanted it to do. We are identifying the vacant properties, which is great, we're identifying them. Where the challenges are coming and where the citizens are getting frustrated is, once they're identified, what are they doing to get the properties into compliance? I mean, we are issuing notices, but a lot of our properties are abandoned or owned by deceased people. We can't take deceased people to court, that's not something. Or do what?
Or a bank.
Or a bank. Um, so we we can't take deceased people to court. We just aren't allowed to do that type of stuff. Um, so then we have people that are abandoned who just don't really care if they have it. Or we have the bank, as as Scott mentioned, that just isn't interested, they're just trying to flip it, they don't even want to really be an owner. Uh, sometimes, like with our foreclosures, we have the bank will initiate the foreclosures, but they won't take title to the property. So we have the owner that has been foreclosed on that uh vacated the property, but the bank won't take title. And now we were sending letters to the property owner that has been foreclosed on. They don't have anything in it anymore, but they're still listed as the registered owner of the property. It's very unique on how banks go about this type of foreclosure process. Where we're seeing that we could probably help with the frustrations with our citizens is if we had a nuisance conditions at vacant properties, abatement ordinance. Uh, this would actually address some of these concerns that the citizens bring forward, uh, that that we could address. Uh, these nuisance conditions would be, you know, securing all the structures on the premises. It'd also be erecting a fence on the property to prevent unauthorized entry, uh, removing the graffiti from surfaces that maybe have been applied to the property. And then also uh removing utilities from the structure, because some of these do still have utilities at them. And you may say, well, they're vacant, they're not using the bill, but as Scott mentioned, you still get uh either a monthly or quarterly bill from our utility systems for just the flat rates that are sent out. So then we have these bills that just continually build that no one's paying the bills for. So then there's these other rates that we have that the city will never collect those fees. What we're asking from the council is just authorizing us to uh work with legal counsel, to come up with an ordinance to address these type of vacant conditions. I've found several examples at other jurisdictions uh across the country that do have similar ones, that do remove utilities, do erect fences on properties, uh, secure the structures and um also, uh, what was the other item? They'll remove the graffiti as well. The graffiti one, it's been one that's been on our agenda for a long time, just in graffiti abatement ordinance. So I would say that might be a standalone because we have a lot of occupied structures that that don't remove graffiti off them as well. Uh, but the goal would be to be able to address citizens' concerns uh quickly. We have done this in emergency situations, uh, callouts at late at night by the police or fire department or uh the police have raised concerns about conditions that are occurring at a property and we'll we'll erect an offense underneath emergency measures, but it's human far between. We need something a little bit more um uh consistent and be able to apply. So the goal would be drafting an ordinance that would set and establish standards where you would go through certain steps before the city would take the next step to make it more secured or to prevent any type of unwanted activity on a vacant property. I'm here for any feedback or anything else.
Of this ordinance, because, you know, last year I had to deal with Freddie Sub Shop and I talked to the neighbors there and they were all upset about squatters taking over and having drug parties there. So this is a constant problem with the city, but whatever we can do to put these properties back in alignment, I think the residents would be very supportive of, so.
Great.
So um I'm supportive of the vacancy terminating, you know, the clear structures that are, you can just tell it's vacant, right? Um, and even the, and even the proposed changes on rectifying the situations more uh quickly. Um, but my concern is is part of the process. Um, as you know, I forwarded an email um from a citizen that lives on South Potomac about their residential property uh being deemed vacant. And they expressed to me that um that they live there, that's their per- that's their primary residence. However, they do travel quite a bit and they did receive a notice um originally that the property was deemed vacant. They said that they uh thought it was not applicable to them because their property wasn't vacant, so they kind of like just ignored it. And then there was a second notice that came out and they're like, okay, I should respond to this letter. So they called the office um and was told that the water usage was so low that that was one of the determining determining factors that it was vacant. And they were told to flush the toilet more often. And, you know, for me, water determination of, I don't know how we assess that, but like telling someone to make sure they use more water to make sure that it's not vacant, it's like an environmental concern for me. And at the same time, um, we should look into how long it considers, like how long until you hear from the owner that, yeah, I live here or not? And, you know, uh, what they use a property for, to me, is not a huge concern if they want to use it for a man cave, if they want to use it for vacation or whatever case may be. It's, for me, it's more of like how the structure look. Like, if the property is still upkept, if if the fence is still put together, the porch still looks great, there's no broken windows. If they're there for a few months out of the year, like for me, like, doesn't matter. But if it was like literally looking like an eyesore and the neighborhood is obviously complaining because it does look like eyesore, I feel like this program be uh is is for that usage, but not to say, hey, property owner, you're not using enough water here, your property is determined vacant. You know what I mean? So that's that's where I'm kind of like struggling with the process, but also in support of the program for those that absolutely looks horrible for the neighborhood.
So it has to be a trigger. So we have to have a trigger on that type of stuff. And the way we look at it is it's three consecutive quarters, which means nine months of using less than one gallon a day of water. So if you flush a toilet and you have a low-flowed toilet, you're at one and a half gallons. So that means that if you're using less than a gallon a day, you're not flushing the toilet every single day. And then you might have unsanitary conditions that are inside the property that is a concern. Uh, when people do call our office and say, no, I live there, then we put it into the monitoring status. We're not licensing those. So the ones I gave the examples of, for all the ones that we monitor, they're like, let me see if any activity is going onto that property. And like, you are correct that you want to be more concerned about the blake uh blighted properties in town. But when they stay vacant and they continue to stay vacant for a while, they go from that non-bladed to the bladed status. And that can be a a very slippery slope very quickly because no one's monitoring the property on a regular basis. Uh, that's why we have categories that we do, bladed and non-bladed properties, that it shows a lower rate for those that are non-bladed versus bladed properties.
Yeah, when it gets to that bladed portion, yes, definitely act um with the proposed change that, you know, if this goes through, that would help that situation, right? But can I ask you, with with the with the monitoring of all these properties, roughly, like, how long does that take the office to to do? When it comes to like the 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 monitoring of all of monitoring?
Of all these?
Like hours wise, like man-hours.
It takes a lot of time. We are lucky that uh we received Irene uh from uh Support Services. So she came from uh the customer service side of reviewing all those things. She gets a report uh that is nine pages long each week that she has to review to see which properties are. It can take her days to get through each of them.
So with taking resources and time to monitor, again, I don't know if we're like, if we're doing a whole lot more effort in the beginning, instead of just, okay, these blighted buildings, we should attack these first. Because we know those, we know what they look like versus like monitoring so much because of a complaint here and there. And then you have to go back and do like the supplemental status of the properties, like, you know what I'm saying?
It's it's one thing is is that you only mention it, especially to the government, when you're completely frustrated about the situation. And uh, not everyone will report uh a problem at the property. They don't want to feel like they are tattling on someone or so and so. So they will hold back on that type of reporting. So we found that that before we started monitoring it, we had half the amount that we actually had in town. Because these are the only ones that we knew of or that we actually could um figure out on our own without actually monitoring all the reports. So it it's it's kind of one of those things that we want to catch them all or do we not? And, you know, and and the concern is that some of those, I mean, I could take you to some vacant properties in town that you would never even know that they're vacant. Some of them in your community as well that they they just are not, you just have no clue. But it's very hard to to do that. But, I mean, we listen, everyone's concerned, the best thing is if someone got one for that, they needed to call our office.
Quickly, right?
That would be appreciated.
You know, it's like, there's not like a timeframe, like, okay, you have to respond within thirty days or call us or like, there's no timeframe.
So it's thirty days to always register the property with the city.
After initial contact.
After after we send out the application and 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 that. But during that time period, we'll do an inspection as well, because we'll document all the conditions that are at the property. Once we do an inspection, um, automatic letters go after that time period because our biggest thing and the reason why we created the program is to ensure that vacant properties are safe for our first responders when they might have to go out to one of these vacant properties. We don't want any holes in the floors, we don't want any unsafe conditions that the building could collapse or something along those lines. So we have uh have that to to get inside the property. They'll receive letters, which is like the one that you mentioned there, they had an exterior inspection and respond back to us, like they said, they didn't think they were vacant. And then a follow-up letter went back a month later that said, hey, we didn't hear from you, we need to get inside the property. So we will do two more letters follow-up after that to ask for people to get access to them.
So, sorry, quick question. Do we already have like a um, like an order of operations in place for the blighted properties? Like the extremely abandoned, the one that needs like urgent uh attention to right now?
As far as like identifying them? Oh, next steps on them? We have some, uh, as some of it is through the tax sale process that you are looking to adopt next uh week. Uh, those are some of those ones that are in that blighted category and we're working through those. Um, other ones, we have challenges with because they are owned by the deceased people. And there's not too much that we can do at that point. Uh, and it's unfortunate. Uh, somehow the taxes might be getting paid or someone's buying them before we can get them to a tax sale situation to acquire them. With these changes that we're proposing uh next word that are going for adoption next week, we'll be able to maybe address things a little bit uh better with some of those types of particular properties. Uh, the council has authorized, this is underneath Councilmember Alshires, wishes to have the budget available for CO to be able to do abatement work on these properties, which we do a lot of uh on those. Unfortunately, um, with funding, I'm not advocating for more funding, Michelle's still here, I'm not saying, see, Michelle's still there, I'm not advocating for more funding, although we could use it. Uh, that uh that sometimes with these funds, uh, we do go through it pretty quick. If we had to demolish just one property, like uh for the West North Avenue garages that uh, you know, Councilmember Burnett saw me at when we were looking to demo that one. Uh, yeah, that's why I saw that one, uh, that it was over ninety thousand just to demolish that one and we have a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget. So sometimes we just have to go with the worst one to address, to maybe to address the blight condition that might require removal of the structure.
Okay, and then second question. So for the blighted properties, did we ever or do we currently have like any programs similar to what Baltimore City has with like investors and conditions that they can buy the property for a certain amount or?
Like they have a dollar in Baltimore?
Oh, right, so you're talking about.
There are there are conditions attached to.
Right, there is receivership programs and there are land banks. Um, with a land bank, the uh state delegation did adopt stuff a few years ago to allow municipalities to develop a land bank. One of the things, though, it's a little bit different with Baltimore and some other jurisdictions is the volume. Uh, land banks need to be replenished with funds. Some of it is having startup funds to actually create a land bank. So that is one of the more challenges associated with land banks. Uh, but it is uh local, there is law to allow local jurisdictions to adopt their own program for a land bank. As far as receivership goes, um, we've had a lot of discussion about this over years with receivership, with attorneys review of the state law. Baltimore is the only one that has the authority to do something along those lines with state law. Now Frederick and Salisbury have adopted their own ordinances underneath uh police powers. Uh, that was questioned uh whether or not, and I know Frederick is in the middle of a lawsuit with that right now, on do they have the police powers to do receivership? So that really requires that. And then when you say there, it depends on what mayor is uh in office there in Baltimore at the time. Bacon's The Value was one of the more recent ones that was there. I do not know what it's currently called right now, but that is one that you're talking about, is that you have an investor that they can work with for a receiver of the property. Scott knows we've worked with trying to find some local organization to work with to uh be able to establish that. And we just have been unsuccessful trying to find someone to to be a receiver or or to work through as a land bank. And the land bank ones, which Michelle would love me on that one, is we need funding for it. And we need a partner. And that's the bigger thing too. So and then it's replenishing of funds for them each or if the places that establish land banks and how they have done them, if you ask me for the opinion on which which option was the best, I would tell you the land bank is the better option out of the two. Uh, but it is the funding startup for that, it 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 takes a significant amount of funds and and staffing of it. It it it, there's a lot of hurdles to create those programs for a small jurisdiction that doesn't get state funding like we would love for something like that. I could give you a whole bunch of scenarios on other jurisdictions on how they've come up with funding, but we don't have that here.
So it sounds like we're talking uh about a hundred and fifty properties, right?
Uh, as far as potential blights with blights, yes.
So that hundred and fifty properties you're talking about, I mean, we're certainly not don't have that capacity uh like Baltimore City, because for us, it's about point six percent. because for us it's about point six percent of our of our total properties in the city. So less than one percent of the properties in the city um that fall into these conditions. And and really uh a fraction of that hundred and fifty that we're talking about that that are the properties that we identify, that the public identifies, that need some form of redress. And so for me, um when we'd start talking about, you know, putting boards up on windows and fences around, like to me, I'm just trying to visualize whether that's better for the neighborhood. And I want to take the 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 Freddie's um property, it's a good example, right? So the issue isn't really the property. The issue is individuals accessing the property and then using that property in a manner that is uh you know, uh worth the neighborhood. So uh and and so for me, I thought, okay, so we do a pretty good job of identifying the properties. We do a pretty good job of going through the um governmental process of of um abatement. That's a lengthy process, right? But we don't currently, and I don't think that we have the bandwidth frankly, to do the good job of um how to secure the property um so that we um uh decrease the repetition that we see in this handful of properties. So for me, I would be interested in, and I just, you know, did a quick search because I'm trying to blend sort of like securing the property and making it, you know, not a further visual detriment to the neighborhood. And so I would be interested in seeing if there are firms out there that provide this type of service um where we say, okay, we've identified property X, right? And we've had, we've had folks sort of break in and try and live in it and do whatever they want half a dozen times. Now, um contractor, uh why can you, you know, we basically pay you to to secure that property in the manner that you have these tools um to do so. And I I use this example, I met with um, I met with a security uh camera contractor a couple of weeks ago, my other hat, um a- about our parks systems. And the technologies that they have available to deter individuals from those public spaces that they utilize uh fairly broadly, I would just think that there's got to be contractors out there that can apply both that aesthetic, you know what I mean? Presence to that property that you're having a problem with and securing it sort of at the same time. And so we would go out, we'd say contractor, we have this property, go out, assess the property and determine what you think the best course of action is to secure this property to to eliminate the issue that we're having at.
So I I I, we've had those companies come into town and secure them. Um and and let me tell you that securing is not always boarding up the properties. Our first response when we secure something is what we call a bracket that we just install on the door so that they can't open the door. And I I I understand. So the deterrent ones, the best example I can give you is if uh you went by two oh two South Prospect Street a few years ago, they used a system that was on every door and window that um that secured it. It was with metal that went across uh all the doors, but still allowed access and for first responders to go into those. There are several companies that do that, and I can always bring something back to show you what those types of securing's look like versus the ones that when when staff secure something, we use what we call a bracket that we screw the to the door and the wall and it keeps the door closed and you wouldn't even know the bracket is on the door.
So in those situations, do we do we employ or do those contractors employ um uh any type of monitoring system and like light uh generating system? Uh because, and I met with this contractor and we were talking about the parks again, but the types of sort of uh of message sounding and and lights that they're able to sort of deploy in in that um virtual uh management process uh you know, deter individuals from wanting to be in that space. I guess that's what I'm getting at, is there a way, you know, where uh it can be uh more readily uh managed where it isn't a response oriented um process?
I would say the challenge comes if we're going to have some sort of monitoring system that's there that's going to use power, who's going to pay that power bill? So that creates that challenge of that if we're already not collecting the revenue from the property owner that's that's abandoned the property.
But we're spending money going out and cleaning it up and removing individuals and resecuring it.
Generally, most of the securing's that we've done were not resecuring the properties on a frequent basis. Now, for the example Councilmember gave with uh Freddie's, we secured the first floor of the property and then they were climbing the roof and getting in through the second floor window.
That's what I'm saying, so that's what I'm talking about. What I'm saying is we have these hundred and fifty properties and a fraction of them require a more invasive permanent approach for the duration that we expect the uh um, you know, uh situation to remain. And those are the ones I would say, is there a way that we can bring in an entity that has a a sort of visual deterrent? You know, because like I said, when I talk to this vendor, I mean, the the technologies that they're employing, you know, the flashing, you know, of the light and and the the abruptness of messaging, um you know, deters individuals from even wanting to to sort of access or be in that space.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can look at those. Um I I just see the challenge with the electricity, who's going to pay the bill? But I can, you can show you.
I can't imagine it would be, I can't imagine that would be a big ticket.
I I I just, I don't.
Look at.
Yeah, I can certainly look at it.
Like I, I guess for me, and and I don't want to drag up last week, but but for me, I feel like we're at a second week in a row where we're talking about ordinances that I support to address uh issues that we have uh on on a measured scale. And in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, the ordinance will will work to address the item, but like what's the solution with passage of the additional um, you know, legislation? I guess that that's what I want to stand. Um and I guess I just, I I don't see that part of it. Because we already have this stuff, we're just saying we're going to do these other items, you know what I mean? It's part of that process of identification, but I don't, I don't feel like it addresses the repetitiveness that exists.
The the biggest thing that we've seen is when we've taken the emergency measure of installing fences at properties to to deter those. And and Freddie's is a is an example of a big open property. So I know we can use that example and that can always be, and like we said, we can create thresholds to determine what type of one for it. I can give several examples of conditions that have gone on other properties in the more core of the city that a, you know, six foot high, six foot long fence resolved an HPD issue very quickly at a property uh that that we've had or resolved the issue with the neighbors that were seeing people walking through the property and just they have small fences. I I looked at two of them today that we had recently installed. So what I can do if the council is is good with it, I can um work with the attorneys on some of it, getting to with all of y'all brought up as concerns, uh come back at a later date to bring up, give some examples of different things, see what other companies are out there for to provide some sort of security uh to these properties and and bring forward any types of thresholds or something to escalate the securing of a property to a different level, bring what the cost of these types of services would be as well. Does that work for everyone?
Sounds good.
All right. Next up, we have Chris Summerling, the next two agenda items. First up is recommending grants management, affordable city incentive programs.
So about May of last year, uh our department came to the body and requested to enter into a request for proposals to start uh soliciting uh request for a grants management platform for our department to use uh to essentially turn our pen and paper and PDF process for our grant part, um very grand incentives into a electronic platform, um streamline everything and make it just easier for our customers moving forward. Um we are here today as we have selected a proposal uh through uh chosen vendors submittable with a price proposal submitted of fifty four thousand nine forty seven over a three-year term uh found on page four uh under the consent form in your packet. Um staff are recommending this vendor uh for a couple of reasons. Uh first and foremost, they are the lowest cost proposal among qualified bidders uh that we had received while still meeting the specifications, terms and conditions that are outlined in our RFP. Um it also streamlines the application process for our for our clients funding and department uh programs in general. It's very customizable and scalable for a variety of programs that we currently operate or we may operate in the future. And it has real-time tracking of applications and management of of those workflows overall. Uh for additional background, the RFP uh for the project uh which outlines the scope of work uh and services expected are also in the back of your packet as well. Uh we were very fortunate that we had the amount of quality responses that we did. Uh we had a total of eight proposals received, um which were then uh received, reevaluated under the required features specified in the RFP, uh prior proposals intuitiveness uh for use as well as a review of comparable platforms that other communities use. Um funding for the project itself will come from uh DCD's budget, computer software and supplies um line item, and we're um bringing this to body to um for support as we move forward through um through the software platform. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chris. And that one?
No. Good job.
This is the project update and deadlines in the Sagerstown Marketplace LLC twenty five thirty one West Church Street.
Uh so we are here today uh following up on a a south project update as well as an extension request that we have received for the Invest Sagerstown City Center Grant for twenty five thirty one West Church Street, um Marketplace LLC, where Hubsy Brings is located at. They are requesting some additional time to uh complete the final mostly outdoor features uh for the project itself. They ran through a couple of delays that were associated with the weather and contractors essentially being able to perform the work that uh they were contracted to do. Um review committee is seeking a decision on a third and final center request for that Invest Center Sagerstown City Center Grant, um which will be consistent with prior um review committee, mayor, city council extension uh decisions for our Invest Sagerstown Center Programs overall. The developer did request through August first, twenty twenty six, but they don't anticipate it to take near that long. It's just that since this is that third request, they want to provide as much of a buffer as possible for completion inspections and final receipts. Are there any questions for this one?
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Next up, Nancy Hawes, Wastewater Deduct Meter for forty five West Oak Ridge Drive. And Joe Thompson.
And Joe, yes, Joe's going to show me, uh, this is an economic development project. The first thing I want to state is that there is still an NDA in place, a non-disclosure agreement. So while we can talk about the specific water and wastewater um request, I really can't go into any detail as far as the business is concerned, but we do have permission to talk about the water and wastewater um request. So um just kind of a little bit of an overview. When this business comes online at full operation, we expect them to use an annual average of seventy five thousand gallons per day of water. Um in the winter, we expect to see them, the water usage drop to around fifty thousand gallons a day, perhaps a little lower, maybe upwards of um to a hundred thousand a day um during the summer. And you use more water for your coolers to to your chillers. So um for the commercial operation, we expect that the annual volume of wastewater um entering the wastewater collection system will be about fifteen thousand gallons per day. Um important to note uh with this request is um there'll be three meters. There'll be one meter, water meter, that feeds the office operation to include uh all of the fixtures, bathrooms, sinks and and that sort of thing. A hundred percent of the water that goes through that meter will also be metered wastewater. And it's for their office operation. They'll have a commercial, they'll have a second meter for their commercial operation and um and only a only a portion of that, fifteen to twenty percent of that water will go through uh enter the wastewater system. But there will be a meter on that wastewater line. Um that meter will be a bill accurate meter so that we would only build in for the wastewater that is entering the collection system and not the total amount of potable water entering the facility. We would issue a non-significant industrial user permit, um EPA uh under the Clean Water Act. We would do that because that gives us right of entry and allows us to require that the meter um that would be used to measure the wastewater flow would could would be calibrated annually so that we ensure that we collect a hundred percent of the um required dollars that we would need to treat that wastewater. Um important to note that should the mayor and council approve this, um we would retain about three hundred EDUs, equivalent dwelling units that we could uh that we can, we could and we will sell to other customers. Um for example, you know, we have a couple of helps and developments coming online. Every house, every single family dwelling unit is one EDU. So that represents three hundred homes worth of capacity that we would, we would retain in our wastewater system. Uh we've talked about this before, um you know, we have limited opportunity to manage capacity in the wastewater system. Um allocation transfers, one of the things we allow. We also allow phased purchase of allocation way instead of forcing a business to buy everything they need upfront if they're going to phase it in. We have started allowing them to actually include it on our site plan and allow them to purchase it when they, when they know they need it just in the event they don't make it to full build out. We haven't sold excess allocation at that point. The other thing that we're doing for capacity management is for master metered apartment buildings. We will, um if if the developer, the builder wants is interested, we will sell them one half, a half of an EDU. And um once they're um at capacity or uh if they need to buy additional additional EDUs, water and and wastewater, then they would buy it at that time. Um so we have limited ways to retain capacity. So wastewater deduct meters, um they're going, they're a good tool. Um and if managed right, they're, you know, they're very effective. I would note also that the county um does has, does have um its wastewater deduct meter program and it's been in place for a while. Um I know one of the businesses is the late, is the business that makes latex paint. The the water leaves in the can, if you will. Um so it absolutely is not going down um into the, down the drain into the, into the sewer system. Um one of the things I also want to mench- mention is that um with this particular request, there is no impact um on our revenue because this is a new customer on our system. So uh we will still receive the revenue associated with, um I'm gonna say the domestic part of their operation, their office building, but we're not going to, our revenue is not going to decrease because we've allowed this. City Code, um there's two sections of City Code. One is a section of City Code two forty point dash sixty three that kind of tells us, okay, how we're going to build water um and that essentially the wastewater is based on the water. But in section two forty sixty nine, City Code um gives the mayor and council the the absolute discretion to grant a wastewater exemption. Um that discretion is um based on. That discretion is based on the determination that the, that wastewater is not entering and cannot enter the wastewater collection system. In this case, that water is, it's, it's evaporative. So it cannot enter the wastewater collection system. And if for some reason they're doing maintenance, there's a flow meter. We'll measure that water that enters the collection system if they're in a maintenance mode. And with that, I'm going to ask if Joe has anything she wants to add.
I'll just add, the economic development team is excited about this development. And it's a win for the company. It's a win for the city. It avoids selling excess allocations, as Nancy talked about, and it retains sixty thousand in gallons per day of allocations to be able to allocate for other growth. So this also helps the company in reducing their operational costs. And this creative solution, I believe, has led to us being able to attract this company to Hagerstown. And we look forward to sharing more when the company is ready to issue a public release.
From my, my perspective, I, I would recommend that this body move forward with the wastewater exemption. And if, if you're in agreement, you know, we have a motion prepared for next week.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you.
Good, city minister.
All right, just a couple of things, mayor. Thank you. Want to thank everybody that came down to St. Patrick's Day on Saturday. It's great to see that many people downtown. Great to see the crowd at Hubs City Brewery. Got there a little late, but Bailey was also, also busy and stayed busy throughout tonight. So it was good. Thank Brittany and Leah. Washington County did a great job. Parks and Rec did a great job with the, with the run, and it was just a good day overall. A couple of updates on the legislature. One of our bills did make it to crossover. That's the enabling legislation to allow code enforcement and parking enforcement to wear body cams. That received, that was a former councilman, now Delegate Schindler's, was the primary sponsor. He got several co-sponsors on it. That looks like it's got a good chance of making it through all the way into law, and that would be into law. So that would be a, a great thing to be able to, to have, not only for code enforcement, but also for the citizens. I think it, it's, it protects both, both rights when it comes to these types of situations. I can tell you that we talked a little bit about highway user revenue. That does seem to be fairly safe for the next two years with flat funding. Again, budget discussions start tomorrow, I believe, in appropriations. And there is really, I, nobody can say what's going to come out of, of the next couple of weeks when it comes to, when it comes to the budget and what's going to happen. I eighty-one still appears to be in there. We also have two hundred fifty thousand dollars still in for the Public Safety Center site analysis and market analysis, SAMA studies, what it's called. Those all seem to be making it through. So it's going to be an interesting next couple of weeks for sure when it comes to the budget. And I'll update you certainly on the things that are, that are going to affect us, affect us here. At this point, the county is the one that's really gonna, could experience some, some push downs when it comes to funding mandates from the state. So not much of that will affect us, but I, I know the county's keeping a good eye on, on what they see coming down the pike. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bell.
I just want to let everyone know that we have went to Frederick. It was at St. John's, St. John's Preparatory for a Russell Hicks championship game. And they, Frederick gave us a huge shout out. They said, every time Hagerstown comes to one of the tournaments, the players are represented well and the parents are amazing. So just wanted to let everybody know when we do go elsewhere, we are represented very well and we get that kudos that I know we deserve. Other than that, I, we are hosting a job readiness in the Jonathan Street community. It is next Tuesday. So I encourage everybody that's listening or here, if you want to register for that, it's going to help with anything job readiness related, resumes, just how to present yourself at an interview. Really want this turnout to be good because then it will help bring trade, trade programs to that area. So just hoping that turns out well. And that's it for me for tonight. It starts, it starts next Tuesday from nine to twelve, and it will be a continuous for the week. And we also are holding our first cleanup. The Jonathan Street Neighborhood First decided to hold their first neighborhood cleanup in the area. So that is next month, I believe, the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. So they're all really excited about that. They started Bethel Gardens Facebook page. I don't know if you've seen it, mayor, but they started Bethel Gardens Facebook page. So they're really excited about that, the residents in that area. So I'll keep everyone informed, the updates with that. I even got, Hagerstown, the Washington County Housing Authority reached out, wants to be a part of that as well. So I'm excited about that. That's it.
Councilwoman Asher. Councilwoman Webber-Natt.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Anderson. Excuse me.
Nothing this evening.
Councilwoman Flaherty.
It was good that St. Patty's Day run, I was there briefly. That was good to see a lot of folks come. And I did a tour of the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts with the director last week. And if you guys haven't done that yet, I would highly encourage that. And met with Delegate Schindler in Annapolis last week. And then I'm happy to hear the governor, as of now, doesn't want to tax soda, sugary drinks, along with businesses for now. So, but a lot can happen in two weeks with sign dying and a lot of other things, so.
Or it can take a different form.
Yeah, so that's the problem. But I hope that they can address those things in Annapolis, but that's all I have.
Personally, I would like to thank all the students at Paramount Elementary. I sat up and read every one of the essays last night. If I were mayor essays, and there was a lot of, a lot of entertaining essays. They, when I went two weeks ago, they asked a lot of questions about what I would look for, and they really, really, really did a great job. So I just want to give, you know, a shout out to, to the elementary school students there and how great of a job they did. And we'll have this picked soon. So with that, do I get a motion to adjourn? I got a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any audience tonight? We're adjourned.
Hello and welcome to Council Rap. I'm Wes Decker. I'm joined by Neighborhood Services Manager, Paul Falk. Paul, during the meeting, the work session, your agenda item was vacancy determination. And basically what that came down to, if my interpretation is correct, is letting mayor and council know how vacant properties are determined in the city, first and foremost. Now, beyond that, part of what vacancy determination helps with, again, through my interpretation of what was discussed, would be, you know, blight and crime elimination to some degree, and then ensuring public safety are the things that, that I heard for the most part. So you talk about the number of properties that are now registered as vacant properties. And I guess the question becomes, you know, when your, your objective is to come up with a nuisance vacant structure abatement ordinance. So how would that help you beyond what you do now in determining what properties are vacant? And then is there then an arm that goes beyond that potentially with that ordinance?
So with it, when we were asked, you know, how do we determine vacant properties in town? And that was the trigger for the discussion. But as preparing for today's meeting, it was one of those things of looking at, you know, when reviewing it, we identify the properties. That's the concern, but where is the citizens really concerned about it? They don't want always us to be able, well, that property is vacant. We figured it out.
Yeah.
They don't want that.
Right, right.
They want us to do something about that vacant property and not being a influence for nefarious activities or to deter those types of activities at the property. That's where it really got to the, the meat of the discussion is trying to protect the citizens and the neighbors and not deteriorate their property values by having these types of conditions nearby. That's where we kind of landed at for the discussion and seeing if the council was interested in having further discussions, trying to protect the, the properties in the neighboring areas so they feel more safe and, and more comfortable being in their home.
I, I find this to be a fascinating discussion because in, in my role for Council Rap, I oftentimes try to put on the hat of the taxpayer. And what is important to me in terms of what that agenda item is and what came out of the discussion? So for me, I feel like with this one, I could go a couple of different ways. I could be that resident who contacts the office and says, hey, I'm pretty sure we have a vacant property over here and there might be some activities taking place that would compromise my safety and the neighborhood in general. Secondly, you could also be a resident where you own a property, but you're not there enough based on the criteria that you use to determine whether a property is vacant or not. So I might receive a letter and then I'm going to come back to you and say, well, hold on a second, I am there, which is certainly something that you brought up. Whether that's true or false, that's what you hear from some of these individuals. And then there are the other folks who maybe haven't experienced one of these vacant properties in their neighborhood or anywhere near them. And they're just like, okay, so what does this mean to me? So I'm sort of coming at it from, from three different angles in a way. And I think one of the things that was touched on, and you even hit on it a little bit here initially, is, you know, these vacant structures may not be obvious. And if they're not obvious, I, I guess my, my initial question is, are they really an issue? Because if they're not obvious, I mean, even the people who are Because if they're not obvious, I mean, even the people who are out looking to do nefarious things wouldn't know that the property is vacant. So how does compiling this list really help you in general in terms of knowing whether a property is quote unquote vacant?
It is interesting, like you said, that you might not know one is, and you might not be paying attention to a property. But there are people that do pay attention in trying to get inside of a structure, sometimes just seeking shelter for themselves or trying to do other activities that were mentioned here tonight. And it might not look that way, and I've come across those over the past, but they still get broken into. They still are being utilized for some sort of other purpose. And then it turns into more of an issue where they are destroying the inside of the property. It might not still lead to the outside looking like those conditions, but they are being broken into. And I think as, anyone that may be listening, or you might know it as well. I mean, I had a vacant property that was two doors down from me. It sat perfectly fine and vacant for a long time. No one even knew it was. And then eventually it got broken into. They got the garage door open and got into the structure. And with this role, I was more comfortable to address those types of issues and not being a citizen that needed to do that. I could handle the things on myself. But, you know, it is concerning when someone sees that. You might not see that garage door open. You're going, oh, that garage door was open. I didn't, I didn't realize that before. And then you start seeing, because then the word of mouth gets spread out that, hey, I can get into this property now. And then more and more people start showing up, and then that went and raised an alarm. There might be people inside of properties that you might not be aware of because it might not only be one person and you just are unaware. Or you just think, oh, well, so-and-so must have rented it out or something along those lines, and you just see someone coming and going from the property. It all varies from case by case.
Well, would you run down the order of events in terms of once you believe that a property is vacant? And certainly you get information from different sources, as you said. I mean, it could be customer service, it could be the fire department, it could be the police department, it could be a number of sources, certainly from those who live in the neighborhood. But what's that order of events to get to a letter being sent to a property owner?
Once we have a property reported to the office, we will visit it to see if the property is occupied or not. And, you know, we, you know, as anything, you can always walk up to the front door and knock on a door. So that's not violating any protections or anything. So we will go knock on the door, see if anyone's home. If no one responds or anything, and then there's the indicators of it. You might see mail laying around on the property, or you may see that it's not as clean as what an occupied property would be. A lot of times when we do those visits, the neighbor walks out and sees us at the property because they are concerned about it. And they will go, hey, and they'll say, hey, you know, no one lives there. Or sometimes we even do just talk to the neighbor if we see them on the front porch. Have you seen anyone going out here? Nah, it's been vacant for years. And then we just get that answer to that question, and a lot of times it's talking to the residents.
Just curiously, with the properties that have been identified as vacant at this point, what's the percentage in terms of those where the taxes have been paid?
I do not know that answer.
But do you have any, okay.
I think the large majority of them are actually paid.
They are?
Yes, yes, they are not going for that. And that's as far as the point where we're seeing it go to a tax sale purpose now. Have they not paid and get the warnings and the other, you know, legal notices? There's potential for that. I only see to the point where they're going to tax sale.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to get at then is that people have some claim to these properties, then certainly whether they are there or not for the period of time that you would deem a property to be, not to end up on that list, so to speak. So I guess my next question is, when someone receives a letter, and then I guess when they're asked to register their property as a vacant property, is there any type of penalty that is tied to that? I mean, is there any kind of stigma or anything that is even tangible that goes along with that?
So if a property is being identified as vacant and they need to register it with the city, let's go first back to your one question there. You said if you received it and you, you know, are living at it temporarily or something, first thing to do is call the office. We can, you know, we'll listen to you, hear what you might have to say, what those conditions are and why it might be showing up as vacant. And we'll give suggestions on the items of like, you know, well, let's do some of these things to try to deter activity at your property. If you are vacant and/or need to register as a property, there are fees for those. It's a hundred dollars for residential structure if you're considered non-blighted. It's $500 if you are blighted, and that's an annual fee for those. Commercial is $250, but the longer you're vacant, it can go up to $1,000 for commercial or non-residential ones. If you fail to register the properties, then it can be a municipal infraction fine for failure to register the properties. We don't generally get to the fine point. Most people either let us know what's going on, like the council member gave an example of a property. Yeah, they got a couple of letters from us, then they gave us a call, and then we were able to navigate through it. So just communication is needed.
And the fee that an individual would pay is just merely the compliance with the city in saying, yes, this is a vacant property?
Well, one of those with creating the fee was to hopefully have people decide, do they want to operate a vacant property in the city of Hagerstown? You know, if you're just having a vacant and you're just paying a fee, eventually the goal is is that, well, maybe I should just sell this property and move on with it and not keep that in my family. We've had some that have sat vacant for decades, and then with this market, it actually has it. I mean, from in the last four years, the number of vacant structures has decreased over 200 properties have been sold due to this, you know, hotter market to get rid of these vacant properties they may have been sitting on.
Yeah, that's definitely the best friend of this whole thing is properties being moved and obviously people wanting to live in those properties, occupy those properties on a regular basis. Thought it was interesting, Councilmember Alshire pointed out, out of all the properties that are identified as vacant right now, which you have at 313, on the blighted side, there are 153. His math said that's about 0.6% of all of those in the city. So his question then was, is it possible to contract the services of a firm or an agency who might be able to help deter some of this nefarious activity that would happen within a vacant property? And something beyond, I guess, the capability and maybe just the time that the city has at this point to be able to do some of these things beyond just making sure that somebody can't get in a door or a window. And I think some of his suggestions were maybe to have some sort of electronic surveillance, perhaps where lights come on, a voice comes on, you know, music, whatever it might be. But my question is, and you, you know, talked about this a little bit in the discussion during the meeting, but my question is, you know, you talk about one of the steps with these vacant properties is to have the utilities removed. So would the electricity even be on at a number of these properties if it would get to that point?
I don't know. Something we'd have to navigate through to figure out how we would want to be able to have those monitoring systems. I'm not familiar with ones to do surveillance on side of a property. I have seen the ones that banks utilize for more beefed up security on the doors and the windows on it. I mean, a lot of times when we respond to a building that's being unsecured, it may have been that the door was just left unlocked. We just go out, lock the door and close the door, and we move on and.
So it can really be that simple?
It is very simple sometimes. So I would, with developing anything or for future discussions, it would be certain thresholds would have to be crossed to, before you elevated the security to a different level. I, and I believe, I can't speak for the council member, but I would assume that's where they would want to land at too. If it's as simple as just locking a door, we want to take the first approach by just taking something simple.
Yeah, without a doubt. But what I was thinking of, I guess, the extreme example was one that was brought up during the discussion, and I think that would be the Freddy's property because you had people who were awfully determined to get back in there even after, you know, steps were taken to keep them out.
Yes, and it's one of those things that everyone just has time to try to enter into a property that when, you know, no matter if it's a company that's being hired or city staff that are trying to secure it, the time is limited to move on to the next concern that is brought to the residents. So it's something certainly that we have to navigate to try to figure out.
Well, next steps then would be for you to go back, take some of the feedback, the input that you heard from the meeting, and then come back. How much time do you think it'll take? Before we hear more, just to let people know, you know, those who are interested in this discussion, when we might get, you know, a follow-up on all, everything that we heard today.
I'll be interested in how people listen and watch for this because these companies that do this professionally for securing properties are probably reaching out to me soon to find out, to see if they could be that contractor with the city. I'll be, you know, reaching out, trying to get estimates on what it would generally cost to do something and seeing what type of programs are out there. I would like to come back in the next month or two to the council to present some sort of path forward off of today's discussion.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of good discussion, I think, with this. Just so many things to consider. I mean, it's one of those where, you know, as you said, it can be as simple as the fact that somebody didn't lock a door, but then it can be as complicated as trying to get a whole host of people out of a property who have seemingly taken it over. So and, you know, lots that falls in between there. So not an enviable task by any means, but I certainly understand, you know, the thought process in coming up with something that could give you a little more of an ability to sort of identify these properties and just give people more of an idea of exactly what all of this means within an ordinance itself. So I certainly understand that and appreciate your time and enlightening us and look forward to, you know, your next discussion and find out where all of this goes, Paul. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thanks to all of you for watching. And for now, that is it. That's a wrap. I'll see you next time on Council Rap.